Morning, we're gonna get started. Members will take their seats and any visitors, please retire behind the rail. And if I can, please ask you to hold your voices down. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Richard Dent, Pastor of First African Baptist Church of Darby Township. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Green. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise. Pastor?
Shall we bow and shall we look to Him who is able to do for us what we cannot do for ourselves? First of all, Lord, we thank You for this day. Every day that we see it means that You haven't given up on us, and we thank You for that. We thank You for the opportunity for these men and these women to serve this great city of Philadelphia. And we ask that You would continue to give them a servant's heart to be able to help the marginalized and those who are on the other side of the tracks. We also ask that You give us what we need in order to make this city a great city as it has been over the years. Thank You for the leadership of President Clark and the women and men who consider that robbery, to give up their time and their service. The essence of life is service that we give to others. And we are in rhythm with Him who is our Savior, who said, "I came not to be served, but to serve." And we ask this in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much Reverend, we appreciate you. Council be at ease. Thank you, and again Reverend, thank you so much for those inspiring words. Before we start, I'd like to ask anyone who has a cellphone or any other electronic device that makes noise, if you can please turn it on silent, or if you can turn it off. We really appreciate that. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal, the meeting of Thursday, September 26, 2019, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 26, 2019, be approved.
Thank you, it's been moved improperly second, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, 26, 2019, stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and our Journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Green.
Thank you, leave shall be granted. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absent.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. You hope you're stay here. Today is a pleasurable one and a knowledgeable one. So again, thank you so much for being here. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, who will present a resolution on my behalf to J. Russell Pelts. With Mr. Pelts and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. Prior to that, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
I would like to do just a special introduction to one of the civil rights fighters of all time. He counseled the Little Rock Nine, held many workshops for SCLC, SNCCOR, and many others in the freedom movement. It is with great pleasure that I present to City Council the Reverend James Lawson.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we are be honoring, want to fill up his own, a legend, Mr. Pelts and accompanying Councilman Greenlee, we have Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Don, and Councilwoman Blackwell, who I believe actually has a pair of boxing gloves hanging up in her office. And Councilman Squillen, please proceed.
Thank you, Ms. President. I think you said it all, definitely a legend. This is a resolution celebrating J. Russell Pelts and the 50th anniversary of Pelts Boxing Promotions Incorporated. Whereas October 4, 2019 marks the 50th anniversary of Pelts Boxing Promotions Incorporated. This anniversary celebrates the contributions of J. Russell Pelts, President of Pelts Boxing Promotions Incorporated, native Philadelphian and legendary boxing matchmaker. And...
Whereas J. Russell Pelts, the Boy Wonder, promoted his first boxing match on September 30, 1969, and sold out the Blue Horizon, a historic 1,300-seat boxing center on North Broad Street. Over the course of his distinguished career, J. Russell Pelts earned numerous awards, including the James J. Walker Award from the Boxing Writers Association of America in 1999 for his long and meritorious service to boxing, the Career Achievement Award from the Philadelphia Sports Writers Association in 2000, and induction into the World Boxing Hall of Fame in 2000. Whereas J. Russell Pelts is a graduate of Temple University, where he received a BS in Journalism in 1968. That year, he was also named the winner of the Sigma Delta Chi Award, honoring him as the outstanding male graduate in Journalism. Throughout his time at Temple, J. Russell Pelts progressed from Assistant Sports Editor as a freshman to City Editor as a junior. By the time he was a senior at Temple, J. Russell Pelts worked full-time on the sports desk of the Evening Bulletin, where he would stay until he promoted his first boxing match.
Whereas J. Russell Pelts is the President of Pelts Boxing Promotions, Inc., one of Philadelphia's leading professional boxing organizations since 1969. Over the years, Pelts has promoted boxing matches in Philadelphia and beyond, including the Arts Palace at Broad and Pine Streets, the arena in my area, 46 and Market Streets, and in nearly every casino in Atlantic City. By 1997, Pelts facilitated the first-ever World Boxing Championship fight in Philadelphia, where it was hosted at the legendary Blue Horizon.
Over the course of his career, Pelts has both promoted and co-promoted over 40 World Championship contests. His matches have been televised on ESPN, USA, HBO, and Showtime. In 2002, the boxing news described Pelts as arguably the greatest of his era, and a matchmaker with few rivals. And...
And whereas the city is grateful for the contributions of J. Russell Pelts and the Pelts Boxing Promotions, Inc., and hopes that the next generation of Philadelphians follow in the footsteps of J. Russell Pelts and continues our proud boxing tradition. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that this hereby recognizes and celebrates J. Russell Pelts and the 50th anniversary of the Pelts Boxing Promotions, Inc. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to J. Russell Pelts as evidence of the sincere sentiment of this legislative body. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Pelts for remarks.
Yes. Just as an aside, I had a fight or fight for the World Championship in 2006 in Little Rock, Arkansas, Reverend Lawson. And it was my honor, my privilege, my duty. I visited Central High School, because I remember as a kid in 1957, what went on, and I read the book by, I think it was Big Girls Don't Cry, or something about Mrs. Beals at Little Rock High School. So it's an honor to see you here today. Thank you. As far as my career, I'm humbled to be honored by the city, because when you really think about it, the only thing I've done for the last 50 years is start fights that other people finish. But I've been privileged to have grown up in the greatest fight city in the world. Some of the greatest fighters of all time have fought for me, Hall of Fame fighters, beginning with my first love Benny Briscoe in 1969, and going all the way up through one of my fighters who won a world title in Beijing, China, a couple of years ago by the name of Jason Sosa. When I was a kid and I was outside playing Cowboys and Indians, which is what we did in the 50s, and I would see my father come home from work with his blueprints, he was in the plumbing, heating, and air conditioning business, and I'd say to myself, wouldn't it be great if when I grew up, I could still play Cowboys and Indians and never have to go to work? And honestly, that's what my career's been like. So thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you, Council be at ease. Thank you, thank you so much. At this time, Councilwoman, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I too rise to recognize one of Puerto Rico's most famous and coveted artists, Samuel Lynn. Samuel Lynn is a cultural ambassador, artist, and activist in the town of Loisa, which is the adopted town of Councilman Jones, Curtis Jones, and makes his work that brings awareness to issues regarding racial justice, spirituality, cultural legacy, and gentrification. Reared and based in the majority Afro-Latino town, Lynn, an Afro-Caribbean artist, created in his house and studio a cultural depository and safe space for the people to celebrate and preserve their heritage in the face of climate and economic disruptions. Lynn's most recent paintings, sculptures, and silkscreens prints often represent these individuals of nature and challenge the norms of spiritual sanctification. He will be opening up his exhibit this Friday, October 4, 2019, at Taller Puerto Ricano, which all of you know is the renowned Puerto Rican museum in North Philadelphia. Please, all of you join me in welcoming Samuel Lynn to the Philadelphia City Council. He is joined by no other than former Councilman Angel Ortiz.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Councilman, we needed you a little earlier to make a quorum. Yeah? How you doing? Good. Thank you for being here. We're going to Councilwoman Blackwell. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a resolution recognizing Pastor A. Dent. With Pastor Dent and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman O, I'm sorry, Councilman O, Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, and Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We note that Derek Green is also listed, but as we all know, he is out of town, and so we acknowledge him in his absence and thank him. Certainly, we both, I've known the Dents, he and his brother, all our lives. We grew up together, and so it gives me a special pleasure to be here to join with my colleagues, certainly in honoring him. Recognizing and honoring Reverend Richard A. Dent as he steps down as pastor of First African Baptist Church of Darby Township. Whereas for more than three decades, Reverend A. Richard Dent has served as pastor of the First African Baptist Church of Darby Township in Sharon Hill, building a legacy of leadership that members describe as both spiritual and hands-on. And... Whereas First African Baptist Church was Reverend Dent's first pastorate after graduating from Eastern Baptist Theological Seminary. And as his relationship with the congregation has deepened over time, he has become more and more certain that the Lord intended for him to be present in that place at that time. And...
Whereas under the stewardship of Reverend Dent, First African Baptist grew its outreach ministries, enhanced its relationships with the community, and ordained its first woman minister, and built a brand-new church facility. And...
Whereas Reverend Dent is a living example of prioritizing God and the ministry, and the members of First African Baptist have reflected this approach in their own lives by hosting an after-school center, operating an emergency food cupboard, visiting hospitalized people, and hosting a special annual event for teachers at the start of each school year. And...
Whereas Reverend Dent is highly regarded by the congregation for his accessibility, approachability, and hands-on approach, and they know they can call him at any hour and receive a return call. He also calls each member on their birthday. And...
Whereas upon stepping down at the end of December, Reverend Dent will hold the title of Pastor Emeritus, leaving the church in excellent condition for the next pastor whom he will help identify. He will have the opportunity for some well-deserved rest, yet will continue to be a familiar face at First African Baptist. Now therefore, be it...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that Council does hereby recognize and honor Reverend A. Richard Dent as he steps down as pastor of First African Baptist Church of Darby Township.
Further resolved, an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Reverend A. Richard Dent, evidencing the sincere admiration and respect of this legislative body, and we would like to say congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Pastor Dent for remarks.
This is where we take up an offering. I got one of you men away. Thank you, Councilwomen and Councilmen, and thank you also, Council President Clark, and to all of you. I just wish to say, I am deeply moved and deeply grateful and surprised. I thought you were holding me back so I could get certificate to Del Frisco's, but it didn't work out that way.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council be at ease. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee, who will present a resolution for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. With Jean Lizicki and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Greenlee, we have Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. President. You know, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to do this every year, because the issue of domestic violence would have faded, but unfortunately, as we know, in our city and in our nation, in our world, it is still a scourge that we have to certainly keep people aware of, and also, but also congratulate those people who are out there 24/7 dealing with this important issue. So please to present a resolution declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is being sponsored locally by Women Against Abuse, and through their sponsorship, they are encouraging everyone to help to increase the awareness of domestic violence in our homes and communities and decrease its negative impact on Philadelphia. And...
Mr. President, if you'll indulge me, this may be the last time this young man introduces this resolution, and I want to acknowledge that from the time I got here until now, you've been on the forefront of this issue, along with Councilman Johnson, who in his first year, you and him put in for 300 new beds for shelters, and I'll never forget that, and I don't want anyone to ever forget that. Whereas each year, Philadelphia Police Departments respond to more than 100,000 domestic-related calls, and domestic violence is not just a local problem, but a national issue, where every, wow, every minute, 24 people are victimized by physical violence, rape, and stalking by an intimidating intimate partner in the United States. More than 12 million people over the course of the year, and resulting in the loss of life of more than three individuals each day. And whereas founded in 1976, the mission of the Women Against Abuse is to provide quality and compassionate service in a manner that fosters self-respect and independence in the persons experiencing intimate partner violence, and to lead the struggle to end domestic... and to lead the struggle to end domestic violence through the advocacy and community education. And?
And whereas Women Against Abuse in partnership with Congreso de Latinos Unidos, Lutheran Settlement Houses Bilingual Domestic Violence Program, and Women in Transition, the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative provides a comprehensive continuum of services to survivors of domestic violence and their families here in our city, which includes safe housing, legal aid, counseling, medical advocacy, and behavioral health services. And whereas the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative, while on the front line 29 days of the week, provides education and training to the community about domestic violence issues and resources, and has partnered with the City of Philadelphia to operate the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Hotline. And in fiscal year 2019, more than 13,000 calls were answered through that hotline.
Whereas to ensure a more holistic approach to addressing violence in our community, Women Against Abuse and its sister agencies are partnering with the city administration's Office of Domestic Violence Strategies and over 70 different community stakeholders to implement shared safety. Philadelphia's response to relational violence, a citywide plan to respond to domestic violence in Philadelphia. And? Whereas to support a coordinated community response to domestic violence, the Philadelphia Domestic Violence Collaborative Organizations will hold events throughout the month of October to promote awareness about domestic violence and to build community support so that all Philadelphians will take a stand against violence. Now therefore be it.
Resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia declares and recognizes October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Further resolved and engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to representatives of Women Against Abuse as a sincere expression of City Council's gratitude, appreciation, and commendation for raising the public's awareness regarding domestic violence. Everyone, thank you for everything you do every day.[739.45][739.45](APPLAUSE).
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Lizicki for remarks.
Thank you, Councilmembers Greenlee, Reynolds Brown, Jones, Green, all of the members here today. We're honored to be here again with you to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Philadelphia. As the Executive Director of Women Against Abuse, I'm grateful for this moment with our sister agencies, Lutheran Settlement House, Congreso, and Women in Transition, and with all of you. Because while Domestic Violence Awareness Month marks another year in our progress in Philadelphia's response, it's also a time to reflect and prepare for the work that remains ahead of us. Last year, Council lost a dear friend and colleague in Linda Reyes. Her death sent shockwaves through this body and through our community. It seemed impossible that such a supportive and respected colleague could experience the unthinkable. Linda was one of 27 people killed at the hands of their abuser last year in Philadelphia. The truth is, domestic violence is happening all around us, all the time, right under our noses, and to more people than we can imagine. It's 1 in 4 women, 1 in 10 men, 44% of lesbians, a quarter of gay men, more than half of transgender individuals, 1 in 3 young girls. Think about the number of people in this room and do the simple math. Then add in all the children that are witnesses and also often abused directly. These are not small numbers. And these are our colleagues, our friends, our family members, and maybe ourselves. Each year, as a community, we designate this month to remember and honor those who are experiencing domestic violence and to generate awareness of the impact of the epidemic of this on our community. We use this opportunity to raise our voices against violence because sometimes those we're fighting for cannot. It's time to reinvigorate ourselves, to take action. It's also a time for reflection. And I challenge you with the same question that I've been challenging myself with lately. And that is, what have you done over this past year since domestic violence hit so close to home for this body? And what will you do next year? It's not enough to honor the legacy of those who have passed. We will never have them back. We must do more for those who are survivors, those who are still in the horror of it, and those who might find themselves in a similar situation if we don't do anything to prevent it. So we have a heavy charge here, but there's solutions. And we're in it together. We can teach young people about healthy relationships and what they look like. We could take guns away from people who are abusive. We can believe survivors when they courageously come forward with their stories. And we can make sure that all conversations about violence prevention in our city include conversations about domestic violence. Because we will never stop street violence if we don't address original violence, violence in the home where it's learned. We can do more, and we can do better. And we must, for Linda and for many, many others, for the very health of our community. I challenge all of us, be the advocates, be the champions, be the voices, and be the change. Thank you very much.[1007.04][1007.04](APPLAUSE).
Councilbiddies. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who will present a resolution recognizing Mahatma Gandhi with Dr. Anthony Montero. And those accompanying him, please join the councilwoman at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know anyone who doesn't know Tony Montero. This gives me such a great pleasure. It shows how much we respect our leaders and our history to make this honor today. And I want to thank Tony Montero for bringing this to us. And we have a day filled. We're going to the mayor's reception room and then Conversation Hall if anyone can join us hereafter. Resolution, recognizing October 2nd, 2019 as the 150th anniversary of the birth of Mahatma Gandhi and calling on all Philadelphians to honor the legacy of Gandhi in the month of October and unite in mutual love to achieve peace and justice.
Whereas October 2nd, 2019 marks the 150th anniversary of the birth of Mahatma Gandhi. Gandhi brought life and movement to an India that was suffocated under colonial rule and choked by ancient and decaying structures and ideas.
Whereas Gandhi was a political genius that saw the masses of people as the makers of history and the agents of change. He went to the vast Indian presence tree, lived among them, lived as they lived and learned from them. They thus grew to trust him in ways that few leaders in history have been trusted. Whereas Gandhi based his struggles on the concept of haisma, nonviolence, ahimsa, I knew I was gonna get it wrong. And?
Satya graha.
Satya graha, insistence on the truth and truth force. These were ancient concepts drawn from Jain and Hindu traditions and can be found in one form or another in all religious traditions. They uphold the concept that all human life has virtue and that truth, and hence freedom, can be reached. Gandhi converted these concepts into a concrete social force. He put into practice a strategy for collective liberation through resistance to evil. And?
Whereas the freedom of India and the defeat of the British Empire spiraled into a worldwide anti-colonial and anti-racist struggle. It inspired the struggle against apartheid in South Africa. It inspired the black freedom struggle in America as part of the worldwide struggle against racial oppression.
Whereas, in celebrating Gandhi, we celebrate Martin Luther King Jr., the greatest interpreter of Gandhi. Martin Luther King showed that nonviolence resistance is an act of extreme courage. He showed that love can be a powerful social force capable of changing society.
Whereas Gandhi's legacy teaches us how to stand for peace, justice, love, and truth, and how to believe in the oneness of humanity and fight for unity in the midst of evil systems and ideologies that work to divide us. Long live Gandhi and the struggle for peace and freedom.
Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes October 2nd, 2019 as the 150th anniversary of the birth of Mahatma Gandhi and calling upon all Philadelphians to honor the legacy of Gandhi in the month of October and to unite in mutual love to achieve peace and justice. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be made as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia's gratitude, admiration, and recognition.
And the Chair recognizes Dr. Montero.
Thank you very much, Council President Darrell Clark and my beloved sister, Councilwoman Mrs. Janie Blackwell. And to the Council as a whole, on behalf of the Year of Gandhi, the Saturday Free School, and our cooperating organizations, and on my own behalf, please accept our heartfelt thanks. I count myself among those dissatisfied and often angry citizens of this city who are regularly critical of this council for what we often perceive as it's not doing enough for ordinary citizens. However, however, upon more sober reflection, we must acknowledge the problems of this city are much bigger than the council or even city government. And what is needed in the end is an awakened and active citizenry in this city and around the nation to solve these problems. But today, the council has stamped its mark upon history by adopting this resolution commemorating the 150th anniversary of the birth of Mahatma, meaning the great soul Gandhi. In doing so, you have recognized that Gandhi neither belongs to one nation, one religion, or even a single civilization. Indeed, he belongs to humanity and to the ages. In taking this action, council is saying that you want this city to be on the right side of history. You, by taking a stance, are an example to our citizenry and to other elected bodies in the nation. And finally, you do this not because it is popular or because it will bring you political or individual advantage, but because it is right. The spirit that inspires this resolution can best be expressed in the words of that other great Mahatma, Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "We refuse to accept the view that mankind is so tragically bound to the starless midnight of racism and war, and that the bright daybreak of peace and brotherhood can never become a reality. We believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word." End quote. I cannot end without expressing something very personal. It is indeed hard to imagine this council, this city government, or this city without the presence of Councilwoman Blackwell in this chamber. Her not being here is for me a grave injustice, I must say. But my beloved sister, you have served well and honorably. Your work is not over. Stand tall, my sister, and may the grace of God protect and guide you. Long live Mahatma Gandhi. Long live Mahatma Martin Luther King. May our actions today hasten the day when peace and justice will run down like waters and righteousness like a mighty stream. Thank you very much.[1724.45][1724.45](APPLAUSE). Let me, let, would you like to say?
Councilbiddies.
I was gonna ask Reverend Lawson to say something, but he said, "I said enough."[1735.95][1735.95](LAUGHTER).
Councilbiddies. Counselor Biede.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 38th Street, Sansom Street, 39th Street, and Chestnut Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 38th Street, Chestnut Street, 39th Street, and Ludlow Street.
Those bills will be referred to committee?
And a privilege resolution hereby proclaiming October 18th, 2019 as Kulumele Day in Philadelphia in honor of the nation's first African dance and drum ensemble on its 50th anniversary.
And that will be on today's calendar?
And a non-privileged resolution also naming the 5800 block of Baltimore Avenue, Representative Al Dumas Boulevard.
Also on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North Bouvier Street and Master Street, North Bouvier Street and Oxford Street, Francis Street and Ridge Avenue, Folsom Street, and North 27th Street.
Be referred to committee? Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Introduce one bill and two resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Philadelphia Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a stormwater easement agreement with the School District of Philadelphia to allow for the management of stormwater discharge from the northern portion of the school district parcels located at 3201 Ryan Avenue and 3001 Ryan Avenue.
Further to committee?
And a privilege resolution recognizing October 2019 as Manufacturing Month and further honoring Stockwell Elastomeric's for their 100 years of dedication to the manufacturing industry in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar?
And a privilege resolution recognizing Sunday, October 6th, 2019 as General Kasimir Pulaski Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Also today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, one resolution today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Irene Madrack, Executive Director of North Light Community Center on the occasion of her retirement.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Market Street, 22nd Street, Ludlow Street, 24th Street, Chestnut Street, and the Skookul River.
Further to committee? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution and one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Subcode A of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code to further provide for timelines and administrative fees in connection with various permit applications and to establish a special surcharge in connection with accelerated permit reviews.
That bill will be referred to committee?
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Senkofa Freedom Academy Charter School on celebrating its 10th anniversary.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On today, I have two privileged resolutions. The first one honoring Sister Sonia Sanchez is prime sponsored by all of the women of council. The next resolution, Mr. President, is sponsored by yourself along with council members Johnson, Heenan, Gim, Dom, Squilla, Brown, and Tobinberger. And I wish to be acknowledged after the title to the library. Resolution is read.
Second. Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution congratulating Sonia Sanchez on the well-deserved honor of the Annis Field Wolf Lifetime Achievement Award.
Today's calendar?
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings exploring the Free Library of Philadelphia, stopping fines for people with overdue books, and wiping away patrons' outstanding debt.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to quickly note for the record that this resolution calls for a hearing on exploring the potential elimination of fines at the Free Library of Philadelphia. On September 30th, with the leadership of Mayor Lori Lightfoot, Chicago became the largest city to stop fining people for overdue books and wiping away the outstanding debt of its patrons. And it joined a list of more than 200 municipalities across the country in doing so. For those who are counting these dollars, I want to just note that the Free Library only collects about, and I won't say only because all of it is important, about $400,000 annually from fines. And that's down from about $700,000 a few years ago. So I think this resolution and exploring of this issue will jive well with the overall focus of Councilman Johnson's resolution in the upcoming hearing about the library, enhancing equity there, promoting diversity and inclusion, and just checking in on the progress of their organizational goals in the Committee on Legislative Oversight here in council. So, Councilman Johnson and colleagues, I look forward to adding this as a part of that discussion in that committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Council President, no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring the 135th anniversary of The Daily Pennsylvanian, the award-winning student newspaper of the University of Pennsylvania, and the retirement of its general manager, Eric Jacobs, who guided the newspaper with diligence and foresight through the past four decades.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Thank you, Council President, and good morning. Good morning, colleagues, as well. I have two resolutions, one privilege, and I'd like to speak after the title of the privilege resolution is read.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Aging to hold hearings regarding the potential for pilot program designed to use an automated calling system in order to provide benefits to the city's senior population and to combat senior isolation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger.
Well, thank you. I think this is an important resolution. It is modeled after a program in Cleveland, and I would like to discuss it fully. And I think having this hearing would be most appropriate.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on today's calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring and celebrating the 185 years of reporting done by the journalists at the Jess Rahl German Times, a German-American newspaper.
Would also... Certainly, Councilman.
Philadelphia is a very diverse community with many, many immigrant groups. And the German Times, for 185 years, has kept this German community in Philadelphia together. And that is something that should be celebrated not only by the city, but the German community. And I thank you for letting me sponsor this resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Tobinberger. I'm sorry. You got, you know... I mean, the resemblance is there somewhere. Don't ask me where, right? Don't ask me where.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Squilla. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you. I have no bills or resolutions this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you all for one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the establishment of a special committee on child separation in Philadelphia to investigate child separation in Philadelphia's child welfare system and develop recommendations to ensure compliance with the state Child Protective Services law to protect children and due process rights of families and prevent the unnecessary breakup of families.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Thank you. One second. Okay, so... Let me see. So we have, under the council rules, we have the ability to facilitate our progress in our session to limit same-subject-matter public comment. We have 16 people speaking on the same bill. It's... It is not clear to me that those 16 people actually want to speak on the same bill. So if those 16 people would like to speak, I would ask that they list another bill to allow them to speak, and then they can segue into the issue that they really want to speak on. I know how... So, I'm not so... If those individuals on here are interested in speaking on another bill, they have indicated they want to speak on 170408, which is school suspension. We will not have 16 people speaking on school suspension. So I'll read the names. I'll get Mr. Decker to read the names. If those individuals would like to indicate they want to speak for something else, I'd ask that you please do so. Okay, so we are not yet at the public comment session, but I want to give people time to change the subject matter. So we're gonna try to work with you all so you're able to speak, as opposed to me cutting this off at a certain point if people don't have an opportunity to speak. So I want to be as fair as possible. So we're gonna continue with our reports from committee, and hopefully we can work with you all to get you to sign up for something else so you're able to speak on a subject matter that's on the calendar today. Okay. So our next order of business is reports from committees. And the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee on Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee of Public Property and Public Works reports out five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Property and Public Works, to which is referred Bill Number 190130, entitled an ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner and the Procurement Commissioner to enter into a concession agreement with Love Luck LLC for the design, construction, management, and operation of a food and beverage concession in the Fairmount Park Welcome Center in John F. Kennedy Plaza, also known as Love Park. And Bill Number 190606 entitled an ordinance amending Title 16 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Property by amending Chapter 16400 entitled vacant and surplus properties, Chapter 16500 entitled council manic district development program, and Chapter 16700 entitled Philadelphia Land Bank in order to establish uniform procedures for the disposition of property by the city and city-related agencies to whom the city conveys property and to amend the provisions governing the land bank. And Bill Number 190707 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land, together with the improvements they're on, in and about the area bounded by West Cumberland Street, North Age Street, West York Street, and North Ninth Street. And Bill Number 190712 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Lombard Street, South Broad Street, South Street, and Fifteenth Street for further conveyance. And Bill Number 190714 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a leasing agreement with Robert Nicoletti Family Trust for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 1813 through 25 Hilton Street. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading of this day of Bill Numbers 190130, 190606, 190707, 190712, and 190714.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190130, 190606, 190707, 190712, and 190714. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Squiller for a report from the Committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports 19 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 181047 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Christian Street to South 24th Street and South 19th Street, Montrose Street to South 22nd Street, Catherine Street to South 23rd Street, Carpenter Street to South 15th Street, Bainbridge Street to Webster Street, South 16th Street to Catherine Street. And Bill Number 190101 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Webster Street and South 18th Street, Fitzwater Street and South 20th Street, Christian Street between South Broad Street and South 16th Street, Carpenter Street and South 24th Street, Catherine Street and South 20th Street, Bainbridge Street between 24th Street and School Avenue. And Bill Number 190552 entitled an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 170002, approved May 22, 2017, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 269 by relocating the easterly house line of University Avenue from a point approximately 545 feet north of Currie Boulevard to a point approximately 236 feet further northwardly therefrom by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 190556 entitled an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 120903, approved January 14, 2013, entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 156 by striking from the City Plan 4th Street from Allegheny Avenue to Lipicott Street, striking from the City Plan Lipicott Street from 4th Street towards Terminus westwardly therefrom, and reserving and placing on the City Plan of right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes within the lines of Lipicott Street being stricken by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 190561 entitled an ordinance authorizing Frank Strawbridge to own and maintain a sign anchored into the sidewalk in the public right-of-way at 801 Market Street. And Bill Number 190562 entitled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 242 by striking from the City Plan and vacating a portion of the bed of Old York Road on the southeastern side thereof from a point approximately 55 feet southwest of 66th Avenue to a point approximately 284 feet further southwestwardly therefrom, thereby reducing the width of Old York Road within this area. And Bill Number 190609 entitled an ordinance establishing no parking and tow-away regulations on the east side of Academy Road from Grant Avenue to Glen Street. And Bill Number 190639 entitled an ordinance establishing a four-way stop on the intersection of 53rd and Woodland Streets. And Bill Number 190640 entitled an ordinance establishing a four-way stop on the intersection of 61st and Webster Streets. And Bill Number 190641 entitled an ordinance establishing a four-way stop on the intersection of 49th and Walton Streets. And Bill Number 190642 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Cedar Avenue and South 46th Street, South 44th Street between Walnut Street and Baltimore Avenue, Osage Avenue between South 42nd Street and South 53rd Street. And Bill Number 190642 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Larchwood Street between South 49th Street and South 46th Street, Irving Street and South 53rd Street, Upland Street and South 50th Street, South 51st Street and Market Street, South 54th Street between Cedar Avenue and Catherine Street. And Bill Number 190646 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Stanton Street and Frederick Street, Warden Drive and Henry Avenue, Midvale Avenue and the Oak Road, Calumay Street and Crescent Street, Two Ridge Avenue, Stokely Street and Midvale Avenue, Volker Street and Coulter Street. And Bill Number 190647 entitled an ordinance establishing a no motorhome parking regulation on Drexel Road from City Avenue to Upland Way, both sides. And Bill Number 190648 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Wynwood Road and Malvern Street, North 52nd Street and Overbrook Avenue, Market Street and North 57th Street, Oxford Street and North 59th Street, Edgewood Street and Market Street, Fraser Street and Market Street, Salford Street and Market Street, North 63rd Street and Arch Street. And Bill Number 190656 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Dickinson Street and Moya Mensing Avenue to South Fifth Street, Greenwood Street from South Sixth Street to South Fourth Street, Wharton Street and South Front Street. And Bill Number 190657 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Reed Street and South Third Street, Federal Street and South Fifth Street, Cross Street and Sixth Street, Mountain Street and South Fifth Street. And Bill Number 190658 entitled an ordinance authorizing South Street Headhouse District Hero Michael Harris to construct, own, and maintain various proposed encroachments in the public right-of-way along the 500 block of South Second Street, Median Island, at Headhouse Square Plaza. And Bill Number 190705 entitled an ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled sidewalk sales by adding an exception to a prohibited vending location. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of the 19 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of the 19 bills that were just reported from committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a report from the Committee on the Environment.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on the Environment reports out three bills with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on the Environment, to which is referred Bill Number 190600, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 93400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Energy Conservation to add a new section, 93403, entitled Building Energy Performance Policy to require owners of certain large buildings to conduct tune-ups of the energy and water systems in such buildings. And Bill Number 190636 entitled an ordinance amending Section 3207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Fuel Oil to revise the standards for permissible grades and permissible sulfur content of commercial fuel oil. And Bill Number 190703 entitled an ordinance amending Section 2304 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation for Members of Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils to provide for compensation for the members of the Environmental Justice Advisory Commission and amending Section 213002 entitled Environmental Justice Advisory Commission with respect to membership, timing, and reporting. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 190600, 190636, and 190703.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190600, 190636, and 190703. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspending of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar in our next session of council. As there are additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 190558, 190559, 190608, 190651. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, did you want to? Thank you. Before we consider the bills and resolutions that are on the final passage calendar today, as I indicated earlier, I've asked those individuals to sign up for different legislation. I understand that there will probably be a lot of segueing today, because people want to talk about something that's not on the calendar. I'd ask that you guys humor us and start the discussion about the bill that you have actually signed up for before you segue into whatever issue it is you would like to do that. We do have an extremely lengthy list of people today, so I'm going to ask you to alter your comment today to two minutes so we can accommodate everyone on the list. Okay? So, Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
Commenting on 170408.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sister Talia Taylor. I am president of the City of Dreams Coalition. Everyone knows me from doing a lot of youth work around the city. A lot of you guys don't know why. The truth is, I am a product of a failed system, mainly because nobody would listen. As I grew up and been passed around from foster home to foster home all my life, nobody has ever listened, even as a straight A student in sixth grade. I was a straight A student in sixth grade, taking special academic classes, college classes in Temple, and nobody still would listen. I had 12 scholarships out of fourth district. My first award was actually right here for academics excellence, for beating 133,000 kids for the first scholarship, and still, nobody, no judge, nobody would listen to the abuse, the physical abuse and sexual abuse that I went through as a child. So that's why it disturbs me that this bill has not been passed unanimously to try to change DHS and certain things in its system. It's taken a lot for me to speak, as you all know me and see me as a public figure. In court, on my birthday, when I was 13, I begged the judge not to send me home, and he still did, and he still did. I told him how I was being abused, how I'd go hungry for days. He still sent me home because they do not listen to the children and what they go through. And that's why that part of this bill means so much to me, even though a lot of kids, you know, you can't listen to everything, but if you can't depict the ones that want to do better, the ones that want to succeed, then you need to learn how to. I went hungry for three days, or after he sent me home. My father didn't even come home for a few days. After that, I grabbed my suitcase and went up hitting the streets again, wanting to have to go to girls' high, finish out Bieber, living in a room selling weed at night. I shouldn't have to have gone through that. My education was taken from me. I only imagine what I could have been. Also, only because of the system failed me again. The most important part of changing DHS is giving the children an opportunity to speak. Only then you will be able to distinguish which children want to do better and should be placed in independent living. If you don't know how to separate, you need to learn how to distinguish those children. The system has failed me my whole life. It's time to stop the turning tables.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Bridget Powell.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As a school nurse for 23 years, and a school nurse at an elementary school, Powell, in West Philadelphia for 13 years, I would like to say that suspensions aren't taken lightly, so this is why I'm not for suspending students. I feel like we need to address the root of the problem, and on Friday, my nephew may be suspended, and it's only because that he wants to go see his sister, but DHS has decided to change the visitation time to school hours, so he has only seen his sister four times since July 1st, and he has to make a decision whether to stay in school or whether to go see his sister, whose visit has been changed from Wednesday at 3:30, when he's out of school, at 1:30, to now a school day when he's in school. So I just think that we need to address the root of the problem, because on Friday, most likely, my nephew will be suspended because he wants to go see his sister. He's only seen four times since July 1st.
Thank you for your testimony.
Brianna Donahue.
She's not here. You didn't hear?
Brianna Donahue.
Good afternoon.
I'm here. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. I'm here today to give public comment on Resolution Number 170408. On February 12th and May 16th, 2019, and May 16th, 2019, City Council held hearings regarding Councilman David O's Resolution Number 190347, in which over 50 families, including children that were illegally and unnecessarily removed from their homes, came out to testify about the illegal practices of Philadelphia's Department of Human Services. I've been told on many different occasions by many different DHS workers, coworkers, staff members from the DHS Commissioner's Office that, and I quote, "Every social worker is different. We all have our own views and opinions." Social workers removing children due to their own personal feelings is absolutely illegal. It is a parent's fundamental and constitutional right to parent their children as they see fit, as long as there is no child abuse or child neglect. In order to remove children from their homes according to state and federal child welfare laws, there must be physical evidence that the child or children are in imminent danger, and that don't mean the word of an improperly trained social worker that has not met a family for more than five minutes and has no degree in training and law or law enforcement. Councilman David O's Resolution 190346, if passed, would create a very much needed task force that would bring transparency and accountability over an agency that currently has absolutely no oversight whatsoever. The fact that the police department uses body cams and has... The fact that the police department uses body cams and has internal affairs overseeing them, judges have the Judicial Conduct Board overseeing them, and attorneys have a disciplinary board in the Bar Association overseeing them as well, but yet DHS continues to operate without oversight regardless of how many children have been abused, neglected, and murdered while in their care is absolutely outrageous. If DHS is operating within state laws, then why are they so opposed to transparency and accountability when families speak out over DHS petition? Speak out. DHS petitions the court for an emergency listing just to have the dependency court judges to place an illegal gag order on that. On May sixteenth...
Hey, ma'am. Ma'am. All right. So, I'm going to ask you all one more time.
I was getting to the...
No. Your time is up. I'm going to ask you all one more time. When you come up, you're not going to speak about, there's no intention to speak about what's on the calendar today. I'm going to ask that you start out speaking about what you signed up for, because I will have to cut you off, all right? Trying to accommodate everybody by allowing you to segue into it, but you can't just come up and go directly into something that's not on the calendar, okay? So, I'm trying to accommodate you guys. Thank you. Call the next person.
Vanessa Leary.
Good afternoon.
My name is, as you already see, Vanessa Leary. My son might be possible for suspension at the age of six, first grade, due to his school report. Let me see.
Thank you.
Yelling bad things, kicking, screaming, hearing voices telling him to do bad things to his teachers, calling people fat head. Apparently, this voice in his head is telling him that his brain has two arms, two legs, and a face. But, he wasn't always like this. Two years ago, he was never like this. This is my son. See this? Came to a visit. This is scarlet fever. How does a kid come to a visit with scarlet fever? See that? Do I have your attention now? Scarlet fever, five years old. This is an eighteen-month-old baby. Well, at the time, fourteen months old. See the bumps on his face? This is supposed to be heat rash that was caused by, see the blisters and pus coming from his head? See this? This is cradle cap that became abscessed. Abscessed, that had to be cut open and drained. But this is my imagination. See this? Do I have your attention now? You sit there and say, "We have a limited time?" A limited time. Do you have a limited time on a kid's life?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
This is why this resolution needs to be passed. So, don't tell me you don't have time to give us this much of respect. You have council members going outside, having sidebar conversations. You have other members that don't care.
Thank you.
We have too much heart for this. All we ask is...
Ma'am, thank you.
My kids' lives are in danger. I went to court all Tuesday. I completed all calls, every single call that DHS has asked for.
Okay, ma'am. Yeah, you have other people that want to testify. You got to let other people...
You know my name? My name is Rashida Wright.
Okay, but you have other people that want to testify, ma'am. You got to let other people testify. Next name.
Rashii Shaw. Commenting on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Actually, I'm not Rashii Shaw. I'm Rashii Shaw's mom. He's fourteen years old, and we have court today.
I'm sorry.
So, he had to go to court today.
Hold on. I didn't hear you. Slow down. What did you say? You said you're not...
I said, "I'm not Rashii Shaw." Rashii Shaw was here, but he had to go over to court today because we had court with DHS.
Okay.
On my last court date, I tried to explain to the judge that turning points were not meeting any of my son's needs...
Okay. You're testifying on what? What are you testi...
What do you want me to testify on? The five times that he's been suspended from school?
Ma'am, you got to sign up for something that's on the calendar. You can't just come up and speak about...
Okay, well, this is my first time being here, so I'm unsure of what to do.
All right. I'll tell you what. Do me a favor.
What is the bill about school suspension?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on. Because we got to have some order here.
One-eight-zero-seven-two-nine?
Do you know what that is?
If that, this is what they're pointing to.
Because you can't just get up and just decide to talk without signing up. You got to sign up for a particular issue that's on the calendar.
And I tried to explain to you that Rashii Shaw is the one who signed up.
I understand that, ma'am. I understand that.
But he had to go to court.
Ma'am, we have certain guidelines in the council chambers, and I'm trying to be as fair as possible, and I'm asking people, but you can't, people just can't get up and just start talking about things that are not on the calendar. So, you know, when you come up, talk about what you signed up for, and if you didn't sign up, you can sign up, all right? But you can't just like somebody was here and left, and you decide to take their place. That's not how it works.
While I'm here to talk about bills...
And I know this is an emotional issue, but you got to have some guidelines here, all right?
I'm here to speak about bill one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight. My name is Rashida Wright. I'm here to speak about suspensions in the Philadelphia School District.
Okay.
My son Rashii Shaw, in seventh grade, revealed some personal information to one of his teachers. It got around the whole school. He was bullied. He was suspended five times for five days. That's twenty-five days that he was suspended for from school and missed twenty-five days from his seventh grade. In eighth grade, they said that he was going to go to another school. We picked another school for him to go to, and things didn't work out at that other school. So, that's the part about the school district and suspension. I was a parent who was in crisis, so I reached out to DHS to get help because I was having some issues with my son and issues with myself. Instead of DHS providing me with help, they treated me as if I wasn't even a human being and told me, "We at DHS, we're not in the business of taking care of children because you no longer want to be a mother." I told her, it wasn't that I no longer wanted to be a mother. I was suffering from PTSD and depression, and my mom was in the hospital dying, and my son needed therapy, and I didn't know what to do or who to reach out. Here is, a year later, my son still hasn't received any therapy. He's supposed to be enjoying his first days of ninth grade. DHS hasn't helped him to get in any school, and the judge, when I complained to him, told me to take it up with my legislator. So, that's why I'm here, to take it up with my legislator, to let you know that DHS is failing kids, and you have parents who are taxpayers, who are going through crisis. I have PTSD, not because this is something that I wanted, because numerous family members, because Rashii's father was murdered, and I see him laying there with his brains blown out. So, this is what parents are going through, through the city of Philadelphia, and no one is giving us any assistance or any help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
April McBride. Commenting on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm here to speak on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight. I feel that children should not be suspended from school. A lot of children, they depend on school for their meals because a lot of them are foster care. Philadelphia DHS system is taking children at alarming rate, at the highest rate in the United States. There's an emergent need for this resolution that Councilman O and Councilwoman Cindy Bass is looking to pass. Their children are in loving homes. They have been taken care of by their parents rather well. No signs of abuse or neglect. They have been removed from their parents because of another regular human being, AKA social workers, family court judges, et cetera. Philadelphia needs to use their so-called gut feeling or financial income for Title Four federal funds and bonus check tactics to remove children without proper city-state federal guidelines being followed. Most of these families have been targeted by their zip code and which state they reside, by family size and income levels. This type of judgment on families is clearly an act of gross discrimination and cruel intent targeting. Such acts is unlawful removal of children and parental alienation, and stripping parents of their God-given rights only bring heartache, pain, and pain to the victimized families. The purpose of DHS CPS agencies are to help and not harm in which their forbidden practices bring various harms to children, parents, and those who love them. These agencies and the powers that be feel that they can tweak the system for their own personal benefits and agendas. Because this practice has been going on for years, the agencies and et cetera feel that the targeted families do not have the financial resources to retain private legal representation that parents don't know their rights, so the agency workers take advantage of their positions and continuously practice on violating parents' rights as well as children's rights, banking on the fact that they can get away with it because of immunity protection. It's time to break their status quo and implement more concrete laws to protect parents, children from their horrible offenses from DHS. I'm asking all you city council members that are hearing our voices today, that we voted you in, to please vote for this new resolution that Councilman O and Councilwoman Cindy Bass give our children away from these evils from the DHS and family court system. It's been exposed to you all that Councilman Helen Gill has lied to you and all of us. We have proof.
Commenting on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking on bill number one-seven...
Speak.
One-seven-zero-four-zero-eight.
Speak into the mic. Can't hear you.
The Philadelphia school system is failing our children. Our children is getting, is not getting the education that's needed because our children are not focused due to child separation to DHS. Many of our children in first grade is in foster homes. That is why it is very important for our children not to be suspended. Children that at age sometimes does not speak out to tell the teachers why they are behaving or misbehaving, whatever the reason why the child was suspended in the first place. This leads to reform schools like Glenn Mills, because after a certain age and a certain amount of suspensions, the children are referring their parents to DHS. Councilwoman Gill established a youth resident placement, the task force that has been meeting since the fall, recommendations for shift installations towards meaning for healthy outcomes. Well, Helen Gill, I wish I could say that about the foster care system. But, because of that, our children are still suffering. Helen Gill have made a R. Kelly resolution. This resolution has said that, yeah, we are focused, this is what Jenice Armstrong from the Delhi Inquirer said. She said, "The Helen Gill is focused on a resolution is introduced and passed." She's focusing it on that and saying about young black kids being raped. My granddaughter, as I showed you, is raped. This is my grandkids in DHS, which they trying to blame on us that's happening. This is the baby that they took from me that I had from birth, and they said that the baby wasn't being taken care of, and this baby was. I'm holding here documents that, from the hospital, that indicate the real rapists, that show everything what the kids say, and no one still did anything. Councilman Clark, you said yourself that this is important. How come you haven't addressed this resolution yet? Our children's lives matter. Our children is being raped, they being beaten, and no one did nothing about this yet.
Okay. I understand...
Somebody need to do something.
Okay, ma'am. I understand there will be another resolution...
Because everybody is held accountable, and it will be a civil lawsuit against all that...
Thank you. Thank you. Next name. Good afternoon.
I'm speaking on resolution one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight. And children being suspended in schools. I was a child suspended in the Philadelphia school system. I'm a part of the Philadelphia School District, of course. I'm now in college, and I did a presentation on the school-to-prison pipeline yesterday. I feel like the DHS system helps perpetuate that, as well as rules in terms of parenting. I don't believe there is a such thing as a perfect parent. No one here, I can consider had a perfect parent, and parenting is a difficult task. I feel like we should focus more on a community-based ideology and just try more so to actually communicate with parents and communicate with children that's put in bad situations. As my mom said, I have a niece that was raped, and the DHS system helped her rapist get her back in his custody, so it's difficult actually trusting the system as a young person that doesn't have kids yet. I don't believe you guys actually care about the system set in place for us. It's difficult to talk about honestly, but the reality of it is, like, we should not be celebrating things in the beginning of city council meetings. Like, our future is the children. We should focus on the children. We should focus on education and the system set forth for us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Commenting on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight.
About two minutes, okay? Yes, sir. I'm speaking on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight. As you know, my child was in DHS for seven years. Cost me thirty-seven thousand legal fee. My child was kidnapped, my both children kidnapped from Philadelphia and put in foster care.
Are you talking about, are you testifying on what?
On the school.
Suspension.
The school, since they've been home, okay?
All right, so they got suspended from school, then they, all right.
Since they've been home, I got them back home.
I'm asking you all to humor me.
Yes.
Just kind of go through the process.
What happened was, they put them on psychotic drugs, and they're not functioning well in school right now. These psychotic drugs where they put these children on, they are alter-minded, and they, you know, this is a travesty of justice, okay? This is like robbing children of their livelihood and give them a criminal record, saying that they have ADHD and all that, and nothing being done, okay? DHS needs to be cleaned up, okay? This is a cesspool for children. It's a mess. It's not DHS. It's DH-mess. And this needs to stop because they keep doing it and getting away with it. Who's going to stop them? Nobody's there to stop them. I've seen children getting killed in there, and they give the family the ashes of the baby, okay? Everybody turn a blind eye, okay? This is not, I got beat up in court, and my shoulder broken, and nobody did nothing because, God, they paid off people under the table. When is this going to stop? I'm asking you, city council, please, take an end and a stand to this and let people know what is going on. If you do not, I'm going to broadcast them over the radio, because I've seen DHS having people on drugs working in that office, okay? And nobody doing nothing about it. So, I'm going to do something. I'm going to blast them on the radio, start blasting them, and I'm writing a book called Seven Years a Nightmare and Foster Care a Crime, and I want you all to read my book when I'm finished, because it's about the system. It's going to Hollywood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I guess I'm speaking on one-seven-zero-four-zero-eight. I guess I'm speaking on 170408. About, you know, the, the kids being suspended from school as a mother for, I don't agree with that. But to get started, um, honestly, I really didn't even want to come down here today. I'm here to support the other moms because we all fighting for the same cause, because to me it's pointless. Y'all not listening, y'all don't pay attention to us, and we not bringing y'all no money for y'all to profit off of us. So, you know, we not really being heard and it's, it's messed up that as parents, that, you know, we really fighting for our children like we did something wrong. I just, you know, like I said, I'm here to just support these moms because we all fighting for our kids. I also want to give an amazing shout out to, you know, City Councilman Jones and David O. because they are the only ones that's being overlooked but are fighting for family separations and housing and services and all of that. And it took three years for me to finally get signed the lease for my children, for me to be told that it was too late. And I have to accept it. I don't agree with that at all, so.
Okay.
I just hope as a unit that we all keep fighting. Mr. Oliver, who was also awesome, part of David O., they are amazing and they really, you know, trying to fight for us, but we don't have no money for y'all, so y'all not listening to us. And that's what it takes. We don't have thousands of dollars to be like, here, can we get our kids back? We being took an advantage of because we are financially don't have it and that's not cool at all. So our children is suffering and then y'all causing our crazy. Your DHS is the cause of our crazy. I ain't never had anxiety or PTSD and none of that. Now y'all want to medicate us and make us forget about our kids and what the cause we fighting for. It's unacceptable, but we have to accept it. And we, as you can see, we not accepting it. Like you, it's, it's many of us here, but being as though y'all don't want to hear it.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate this morning.
Lynn Landis? Joe Cox? Commenting on 160720.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, good afternoon. I am worried about the impact bill 160720 will have on the most vulnerable citizens in the working class. With so many food deserts, the highest populous, population of disabled citizens and being the poorest big city, I am confused as to why we would make a bill to get rid of grocery stores. For many city residents, the corner store is their source of food and other essentials. What this bill seems to do either directly or indirectly is create more food deserts in our underserved communities by restricting access to family-owned establishments. Bill 190559, it's 2019, we need to be more inclusive to all and start being the change. All bathrooms should be gender neutral. We all use the bathroom in the same manner regardless of gender. When nature calls, it does not discriminate. I asked city council to make the public bathrooms more accessible by removing the general hurdle for usage and instead making the few public bathrooms that we do have gender neutral. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate this morning.
Commenting on 190559. Good afternoon, good afternoon. Council President, council members, I appreciate your time. I am, uh, referencing 190559, that is the ordinance to impose new regulations on gender-neutral bathrooms. And I think we ought to, uh, review this before we go any further. I believe that an unnecessary imposition on bathrooms has already occurred. Uh, I think we'll find the cost to be unreasonable and costly and in, it will impact the right to privacy. I see no reason to continue this aggressive movement in political correctness, cultural revision that focuses on sex and the men and women, their roles in our society. The, the political focus, uh, focus needs to be on poverty, homelessness, uh, low wages, the lack of affordable housing, taxes and debt. Poverty is a national security crisis as a result of the sixty-year wealth transference to the 1% facilitated by the Federal Reserve Bank and the Wall Street system, impacting our American standard of living, uh, and the political system. The 1% net household worth broke the one-hundred trillion dollar barrier in 2017 and this fact has been ignored. The oligarchical governance of this country is out of control and it needs to be confronted now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read the name of our next speaker?
Commenting on 180409.
Thank you, actually I'm here for 170408. In nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety, my son was in school, he was in third grade, he was only eight years old, and he was complaining that the new group of kids from the integration program into the northeast had attempted to sexually assault them, sexually assaulted the kids and. Some respect please. Okay, we are talking here about children and how the system is, is failing them, okay? My granddaughter, she was stage four brain cancer and her father was a no-show. Then he abused my daughter, left her unconscious and went, the coward went to get an emergency PFA with eviction to get my daughter out of their lives. Why? Because they are leaving out of fundraisers for my granddaughter and the money goes to buy personal items like cars and electronics. Now the father was granted custody from Monday through Friday and he is now sexually molesting my granddaughter, okay? He told them that even though family court, DHS knew that he likes childlike pornography and is killing and torturing small animals, burying them alive. The detective was very adamant, the detective's ever heard, was very adamant to pursue this issue of the sexually, sexual abuse of my granddaughter, okay? And he told her that my granddaughter cannot speak. I have a record here on my granddaughter and tell me if this is not a kid, I can't speak. Oh please, I'm sorry, but I have to play this. No, but the boys.
Well, thank, thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, are there any other speakers on today's?
I'm sorry, but I, I have to play this. You were not listening to me to begin with, so you owe me at least a couple more seconds.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but he wasn't listening to me, I'm sorry sir, but I need.
They're going to shut off your mic anyway.
Please, please, I'm begging you, okay? Please, this is very important to me.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your, for your testimony. Mr. Decker, is there anyone else?
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on 190723.
This is official decree of the people, man damas, quor warranto, as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor and others transfer private property to government, probably unlawfully. Last week, I retestified to repeated denial and deprivation of God-given rights. Why hasn't every official provided immediate remedy as required by law? In addition to this testimony, repeated over a hundred times, requires the attorney generals and the district attorney to prosecute. The failure to perform a known duty or task requires armed sheriff and de, and police stationed in council chambers to arrest all officials involved as previously testified to. If officials do not want to obey, protect, and defend the constitutions and laws, why do they seek reelection? If officials lie to God, violate their oath, how can people trust them? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two U.S.C. 982, 983, 985, 986, 987. Eighteen U.S.C. 241, 242, 23A1, 23A4. PA Constitution, Article One, Sections 1 through 28. Twenty-six P.A. CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716. And other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, and the denial of God-given forty-two U.S. 982 property rights for twenty-five years. Is egregious, extraordinary oath violating and requires immediate remedy. I remind council, it takes law cooperation to create and allow all of this monumental corruption and this disdain for your constituents.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, is there anyone, anyone else here who signed up?
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. Chairman.
Saying that concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of bill number 190558?
An ordinance amending chapter nine eleven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination by adding a new section nine eleven thirty-three to require that institutions or organizations that serve youth adopt and make known policy guidelines providing for nondiscriminatory treatment of transgender and gender non-conforming youth.
This bill had been read on two separate days. The question now is shall the bill be passed finally? Mr. Decker, would you please read the roll?
Councilwoman Bass? Councilwoman Blackwell? Councilman Dom? Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm? Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O.?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Tottenberger?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
The ayes are fourteen, the nays are zero, the majority of members have been voting in the affirmative that bill passes. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of bill number 190559?
An ordinance amending section sixteen one oh four of the Philadelphia Code entitled Gender Neutral Bathrooms to impose additional requirements regarding installation of gender-neutral bathrooms in city buildings.
The bill have been read on two separate occasions. The question now is shall the bill be passed finally? Mr. Decker, would you please read the roll?
Councilwoman Bass? Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O.?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Tottenberger?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
The ayes are fourteen, the nays are zero, the majority of members are voting in the affirmative that bill passes. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of bill number 190608?
An ordinance amending title twenty-one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Misalinas by adding a new chapter twenty-one thirty-one hundred entitled Reporting of Settlements of Civil Actions to establish a system of quarterly reporting and evaluation of means to reduce future liability.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, uh, Majority Leader. Um, I wanted to say that I wanted to be recorded as voting aye on the earlier bills that were read today. Um, and for this particular bill, I would like to offer an amendment to bill number 190608. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council and I move for the adoption of the amendment.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Would the amendment, bill number 190608, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Amendment to bill number one zero, 190608 will be read at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, would you please read the title of bill number 190651? Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I have to step away, so I'd like to be recorded as voted aye on all bills and resolutions.
Be duly noted on the record, thank you. Mr. Decker, bill number 190651.
An ordinance amending chapter nine eleven hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination by revising the definitions of gender identity and sexual orientation.
This bill also has been read on two separate days. The question now, shall the bill be passed finally? Mr. Decker, would you please, please, read the roll? Jesus Christ. Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you so much, uh, thank you very much, Majority Leader. Um, so I, I apologize for being a little bit late, um, but this bill is part of a package of bills, um, the three bills that we're passing today that have been a long time in the making. And collectively, they help us, uh, think about the city we want to live in and proactively thinking about who we stand up for and how we stand up for each other and what's right in this moment. These bills arise out of the lived experiences of Philadelphians and I want to thank all the community members who came forward, um, to help and advise us in creating these bills and told us so clearly why it matters, including facing discrimination, um, in their schools and in some of the programs that they've experienced and even here at City Hall, to be honest. Um, I want to thank civil rights organizations from the ACLU, Philadelphia Family Pride, and the William Way Center and Juvenile Law Center. These organizations demonstrate the best of our city because of their efforts to expand protections locally while federal government is, feels like it's bent on erasing and attacking our trans brothers and sisters. Um, I especially want to thank the Long Government Committee members, um, Councilman Greenlee, Jones, O'Neal, and Bass for their affirmative vote to build a truly inclusive city. Um, and I have to thank, uh, my own staff member, Christian Love Hall, a true leader and champion for trans rights, who I have been lucky to have on staff. But this work builds on groundbreaking legislation enacted by this council and led by Mayor Kenny. Um, I find, I want to end by saying, uh, there's a number of people who make careless comments about trans and, uh, gender non-conforming individuals. Um, and I think a ten-year-old named Itzella Wiley said it really best at our hearing. People can be mean and other people can be hurtful without meaning to be. I don't need to hear that it's hard, I don't expect people to be perfect, I only ask for people to try and to respect me for who I am. And because I know that I am supported, I'm here to speak for those who are not. Um, so I wanted to just thank this council for being so generous, um, on this issue as we work to expand civil rights and protections in this era. With that, I move for the passage of the bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other speeches? Okay, move forward on the vote. Prior to me calling for the vote on 190651, Mr. Decker, please, I would like to be recorded as voting aye on 190558, aye on 190559, and aye on the amendment to 190608. 190651, this bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson is voting aye. Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger?
Aye.
Council President Clark?
Aye, the ayes are 16, the nays are zero, majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution hereby proclaiming October 18, 2019, is Kulu Mele Day in Philadelphia in honor of the nation's first African dance and drum ensemble on its 50th anniversary, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing October 2019 as Manufacturing Month and further honoring Stockwell Elastometric for their 100 years of dedication to the manufacturing industry in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Council President, I'd like to be recognized before we vote. Just want to also, prior to the vote on this resolution, which is in honor of the manufacturing here, which we are workshop at a world, I want to thank PIDC and Commerce Department for also recognizing all of the manufacturing businesses in the city of Philadelphia that I speak about day in and day out, that employs over 23,000 citizens of our city, including training of our youth in our schools with CTE programs with a direct pipeline into job creation, you know, creating jobs and jobs right here in the city. There is a shortage of youth and a pipeline for people to work in these jobs, and we range from aerospace to food and beverage, to healthcare, packaging and technology. And we have longstanding, fourth-generation businesses that remain here in the city of Philadelphia, have chose to grow here in the city of Philadelphia and employ Philadelphia kids from our school system, employ people who are choosing to have a sustainable living and workforce right here in our neighborhoods, and I want to thank all of them. I have one of the businesses I want to recognize, Stockwell. Stockwell is an elastometric company for, they're celebrating their 100-year anniversary in this fall. 100 years, fourth generation, chose to put an addition on, chose to hire more Philadelphians, and chose to use them right directly from our school district. So, it's businesses like that, it's growth in the sector that we have here in our city that we would, we want to keep recognizing and keep promoting on a daily basis, all right? Because Philadelphia is where it's at, and we want to encourage more businesses to open up here, sell their products here and employ our residents here. So, with that, I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Sunday, October 6, 2019, as General Kazimir Pulaski Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair again, recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Irene Madrack, Executive Director of North Light Community Center on the occasion of her retirement, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, in parts of my district, people tell time, literally, generationally, by people who ran particular centers, coached particular teams, were you on the team that caught the fly ball, that won the championship kind of thing. This center is more than just a center, it's a place where people met and got married, where people found lifelong friendships. So, I had to learn this the long way, when you become an elected official, how important some of these community centers are. So, I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Sancofa Freedom Academy Charter School on celebrating its 10th anniversary, introduced by Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution congratulating Sonia Sanchez on the well-deserved honor of the Annis Field Wolf Lifetime Achievement Award, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings exploring the Free Library of Philadelphia, stopping fines for people with overdue books, and wiping away patrons' outstanding debt, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Recognize Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the 135th anniversary of the Daily Pennsylvanian, the award-winning student newspaper of the University of Pennsylvania, and the retirement of its general manager, Eric Jacobs, who guided the newspaper with diligence and foresight through the past four decades, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Aging to hold hearings regarding the potential for pilot program designed to use an automated calling system in order to provide benefits to the city's senior population and to combat senior isolation, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating the 185 years of reporting done by the journalists at the JFRO German Times, a German-American newspaper, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair again, recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Are there any...no, any speeches on behalf of the majority? All right. There being none, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council to stand adjourn until Thursday, October 10, 2019, at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Council will stand adjourn until Thursday, October 10, 2019, 10:00 a.m. Thank you very much.